Police David Fletch. Like David. Oh, yeah. Don't worry. I'm like, I can run check for long. I'm sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever strong. Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Graven.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Yes, here. Let's see, Consent Agenda. Items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless the council member requests the item to be removed from the Consent Agenda. If an item is removed from the Consent Agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to have an item removed from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 1st, 2021, the bills and payroll for the first half of November 2022, and Resolution Number 2022-3219 approving the continuance of a local state of emergency due to coronavirus COVID-19. And roll call.
I mean, just a second.
I'll second that. I'm sorry. I'll second that.
Who did that?
Mr. Phipps.
Mr. Phipps, okay. Now, roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters they have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you to state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. We do have a couple of items on the public hearing.
Whichever you want to do first.
That's fine. Public hearing and development proposal from Casey Bank. We need to do here.
You need to open the public hearing. You're opening a public hearing.
Okay, we want to open the public hearing for any discussions. Who's going to?
I'm going to speak on that. This is just part of our corridor review committee. Anything that's built between Mattoon and Charleston, it goes either in the Mattoon side or Charleston side, goes to the corridor review committee. We did have a hearing on that, a public hearing on that, on October 13th. And then they have to have a public hearing in front of the council, and the council also approved it. Really, it's a development that there's special standards in the corridor review, some bigger setbacks off of Lerner Road and Route 16. Just here is the diagram of some of what the layout is. Lerner Road's on the left-hand side, building, parking lot. Like I said, there's bigger setbacks off of Lerner Road, and there's two different setbacks. The first setback's can't have anything in it. The second one will allow like parking lots and landscaping in it. Well, the first one allows landscaping in it as well, but the second one can have hard surfaces like parking lots, and then after that, then the building can be set in place. This building meets all the requirements of the corridor. There's also some landscaping requirements of the corridor. There's a picture of the front elevation of the building. Side elevation, that would be towards the east. Rear elevation. And then the last page is basically landscaping. Like I said, we do require a lot of landscaping in the corridor development district around the parking lots especially, and it's just kind of a debunk buffer. The, I'd say the only bad thing about this one is it's to the north of Sampson Drive. South of Sampson Drive is a cornfield this year, next year it'll be bean field, but it's going to be a little bit hard for a couple of years or until someone develops the property to the south to be seen from Route 16 when they plant corn. It's a procedural thing. The corridor review committee did approve it. They did recommend approval of the council. The council basically just gives the approval of the site plan. Typically, we do not issue a building permit until everything is approved, but with the loss of Matt Frederick leaving, got mixed up, and Steve went ahead and permitted the building permit after the corridor review, but we had to have this public hearing and then a vote on it tonight. So I'll open it up if anyone has any questions on the corridor review or any questions about this development. If you really don't have any.
So we need to make a motion then to?
Not yet. You need to close at once.
So this is just a public hearing for anyone to have any questions. If there isn't any further questions, then we can close the meeting.
We can make a motion to close.
No, just, you just need to close.
Okay, so I'll just close the meeting there. There's still questions. And then we'll go to, next we'll go to the, open the bid, the bid opening, bids for the sale of real estate, for real estate portion of PIN 06000662000. And you're going to do that.
We had one bid. And Portugal Properties LLC has bid 2,500. There. They have the bid on check here. So we'll put that on hold until?
We'll review that, and if it's acceptable, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Yes, all done for that one?
Yep.
Okay, now we're going to ask for people that would want to address the council. Does anybody? Ma'am, I think maybe you know the one. If you'd step up here to the mic and introduce yourself and then go from there.
Thank you.
No, that'll just kind of tilt it down. Yeah, I think you can just tilt it down.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. My name's Julie, Julie Ann Stell. My address is 2700 Cedar Avenue in Mattoon. And I and my friend Terry Phillips are members of the Women's Christian Temperance Union here in east central Coles County. We are concerned about the marijuana dispensary, and I just have a little presentation about that. I know that the property, the former Long John Silver's property was voted down, but we're concerned about any marijuana dispensary at all. And I just have a few little facts here. Dr. Carlton E. Turner, who was appointed as an advisor to President Reagan, he has been often called the man who knows more about marijuana than anyone else in the world, and he was the director of the National Institute on Drug Abuse Marijuana Research Project and headed the White House Drug Policy Office. Dr. Turner had this to say about marijuana. There is no other drug used or abused by man that has the staying power of the broad cellular action that cannabis does. His conclusion after reviewing more than 8,000 studies and scientific papers on cannabis was not one of these papers gives marijuana a clean bill of health. And we know that it is an entrance drug, and it is addictive. Despite what many people think, it is actually quite easy to form a marijuana addiction as research shows that 30% of users do develop one, and it is especially easy to become addicted to marijuana as a teenager or anyone that's under about 25 years old because marijuana alters the brain chemistry of already changing brains and creates dependency. A young person's brain isn't fully developed until their mid-20s, and during adolescence, the young brain builds structures and forms connections that make it more efficient and strengthens emotional abilities such as self-control. So marijuana, scientists worry that this brain building process may be seriously altered. And so even brain imaging studies comparing young people who smoke pot versus others who don't have shown differences in the brain structure and connections between the hemispheres. Laboratory rats who were given THC, which is the main ingredient in marijuana, at puberty show signs of significant and lasting cognitive problems. And also some side effects and negative effects of marijuana are slowed motor skills, impaired short-term memory, dry eyes and cough, loss of reasoning skills, paranoia, anxiety, and apathy, and low motivation, which is a big concern, I think, low motivation. Some other things are loss of focus, loss of memory, and loss of comprehension, and impaired immune system, loss of ability to fight disease, loss of reproductive capabilities, and increased risk of birth defects, loss of short-term memory, I'm sorry, that's repetitive, impaired motor skills, increased risk of accidents and fatalities, and increased risk of cancer, lung disease, and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. Marijuana use while pregnant can cause low birth weight, preterm birth, miscarriage, placenta complications, fetal growth, restriction, stillbirth, and brain development issues related to problem-solving, memory, and hand-eye coordination, and a higher chance of developing ADD and ADHD. And I think we have so much more ADD and ADHD than we used to have. And, you know, I think some of this drug use is possibly, you know, does cause that. Also, you know, I think it does stifle industriousness, and there's a thing called amotivational syndrome, which I think is a big effect. And you've noticed, I mean, we have so many help-wanted signs, and there's, and a lot of people, you know, don't seem to really want to work. There's not a lot of industriousness in younger generations. And, you know, you wonder if maybe some of this may be, you know, partially to blame. Pot smokers exhibit behavioral changes including mood swings, aggressiveness, irritability, and even schizophrenia. After extended use, pot smokers experience a distinct loss of motivation and ambition, a condition referred to as amotivational syndrome. Heavy marijuana users increase their risk of neurotic and psychotic behavior. When marijuana is combined with other drugs, the effects are compounded. Marijuana predisposes the user to other drug abuse. And I think it takes away from families. Children and families suffer. Also, I know it is a temptation for recovering addicts. I've had someone recently say to me that if the marijuana dispensary had gone into the Long John Silver's facility, that she would have been tempted to relax. And that's a big thing. I mean, there's so many people today that are recovering addicts, and, you know, we do not want to do anything. I mean, of course, I know it's their own, it's their own self-control, but we don't want to put any temptation in their way that would cause them to relax at all. I think also it may bring in some money from taxes, but I think it will cost more in the long run as we need more police hours and more services to people. 58% of heavy smoke, I'm sorry, 58% of heavy pot smokers are more likely to be arrested for a crime and seven times more likely to commit violent crimes, and drivers who use are a traffic risk. And I've seen myself some paranoia just this last year with people who are using drugs, maybe not marijuana, but other drugs, and that paranoia is a very scary thing because you just don't know who they're going to lash out at. And, you know, I just think that it's a starting place for a lot of trouble. And so I just hope that you will just keep the marijuana dispensaries out of our town. This is my town, and I want to keep it as nice as it is. And WCTU has a lot of publications, and so I'm going to just give you some of those. And there's some that are multiple poppies. And so I want to give you these from WCTU. These are from our library. And so if we pass them around, and they have, and I did check this out also, not just from this source, but I've also looked at the CDC site, and, you know, it agrees with these pamphlets, the Centers of Disease Control. So anyway.
Thank you for coming by. Have any questions, all hand?
Anyone can tell me. I don't know that I'm an expert, but I just did a little research, and so I'm just very concerned. I'm concerned about our town, and I'm concerned about the whole drug problem, drug and alcoholism, and just the whole, it just seems to be increasing so much that it's a big concern to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other people? Yeah, step up.
Yeah, Jonathan, the property manager down on Broadway.
You go over by the mic because people are on the phone, and so they can hear you better if you're standing by there.
Yes, I'm here to address the bird and butterfly sanctuary that we have on Broadway. I just wanted to see if it's okay if we wait to mow that until February. I don't think we're having any problems in the neighborhood with it. I think it's a positive benefit to the community. It's been four years that we've been managing that property this way, and I think that's really helping increase the numbers of birds and butterflies. We have identified 15 to 25, depending on the years, of native Illinois prairie plants and grasses. So that's very positive also. So anyway, I would like to ask for this, I don't know what we call it, extension of delayed mowing perhaps. And we do mow it every year, February or March. We'd like to continue that.
Okay. Any questions anybody has? Okay, we will get back to you on that. Do we?
I do have a question. So what'd you refer to? It's a bird and bee sanctuary, butterfly?
Yes, bird and butterfly sanctuary. Naturally.
Was there a designation that got that, or how'd that come about?
Well, it's something that we do. I've been in the industry for probably 40 years, and mostly in trees, but civil culture of all sorts. We planted some native prairie in Cumberland County back in the early 90s, and we've had great results. The direct benefits that we got from that was neighbors who saw it, and then they planted their CRP ground and the same kind of grasses and prairie grasses. So it's been very effective. Some of the old timers have said they hadn't seen so much wildlife since the 60s. So there's been very positive results in certain settings.
I mean, is there, to be a sanctuary, I guess, is it a designation, or is there something that said that this is a designated area for that, or is it just?
We don't have any signs, and I think it'd be a great idea to utilize tourism and perhaps put up some signs. I did make this point at another time, that if we utilized certain municipal areas like along the bike paths, we could have a more positive benefit as well, and it would save us costs, you know, labor and equipment, fuel costs, if we treated those other areas in such a manner. I don't think we've had negative problems with this. It's just a little unorthodox because if you left your yard in this manner, there'd be problems, but we do tend around it. We pick up the litter on a regular basis. We planted $40,000 worth of trees around those areas. So it's not like it's just forget about it, call it a sanctuary. It's actually managed. So, and that's an important component.
Okay.
If we had more of these, I think it'd be better for the community. We'll start with this.
Okay. We'll get back to you on this, okay?
Okay.
If there's any issues, if there's any further issues, okay? All right. I think we're ready for new business. About online? I've got the, anybody online? I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, anybody online would like to make any comments or make any statements before we get to new business? Hearing none, we'll start with myself. I got the first motion. I move, we adopt special ordinance number 2022-1839, authorizing a successor contract for Aetna to administration of self-insured health plan and qualified high-deductible health plan and Delta Dental of Illinois for administration of the self-insured dental plan for employees and retirees of the municipality. Authorizing the continuation of an optional supplemental plan for those current Medicare participants, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, sign all the documents. Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Graven, any discussion, any comments?
I just want to say I had a lot of discussions in the last three weeks on numbers and trying to get others to bid and trying to get finalized. Susan put a lot of work into it and do appreciate everything she did on that, but at the end of the day, they weren't ready to really have all the final numbers to go with anyone else. And the price was brought down by Aetna as well, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll do, roll call then.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to adopt special ordinance number 2022-1840, approving placement of the annual property and casualty insurance and workers' compensation coverage for a term beginning December of the 1st, 2022, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents. Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, any discussion on that one?
Same thing. I had two good bidders on that. They both did good, sharpened their pencils, and ICMRT came in a little bit lower, which is who we're with, so recommend staying with them for at least another year.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
abstained.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-3220, approving a real estate sales contract between the City of Mattoon and the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development, parentheses USDA Rural Development, for lots 49 and 59 of Lake Paradise subdivision on behalf of Philip Goldman, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the option to purchase real estate property contract commonly known as 3009 East Lake Paradise Road, PIN 10-0-00986-000.
And can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Phipps, and any comments on this one? Anybody? Okay, hearing no comments, we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-3221, approving a $225,000 grant agreement with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the bike trail expansion project from 10th Street to 16th Street, and authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement, Agreement Number 22-203302.
Okay, and a second to that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments on that? Anybody?
No.
Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-3222, approving the concept plan for a development proposal from Casey State Bank and its compliance with the standards of the corridor development district.
Second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Cox, and any comments on that one?
Again, this was just a procedural thing that got kind of messed up and delayed, and then, so now we're taking care of it, so.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to adopt Special Ordinance Number 2022-1841, granting a special use located at southeast, at the southeast corner of County Road 300 East and County Road 1,000 North for the purpose of constructing a solar farm. Cooksmill PVI LLC, petitioner number 07-1-00067-000. And a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Graven, and any questions, comments on this item?
Yeah, this is a outside of the city limits, almost a mile and a half, just inside or a mile and a half, extraterritorial. So one portion of the property is inside our mile and a half, so they need to come in and get a special use for this one parcel. The rest of it, most of it is north of 1,000 North and is outside of our extraterritorial jurisdiction. We, Planning Commission did approve it last week to recommend it with some conditions. The conditions was that they do the decommissioning bond, which is a decommissioning bond with the State of Illinois Department of Agriculture. Our ordinance doesn't say that. They would like, the petitioners would like us to put that in there, add that to that, that it is, or refer to that, that is through the Department of State of Illinois. So that, we found that out after I had submitted the ordinance. But, and then the other, yeah, that was the main condition for this one, for the special use, that they make sure that they have the decommissioning, and they just wanted to make sure that we weren't requiring a second decommissioning bond, but which we wouldn't. We'd use the states, so.
So do we need to modify this a little bit?
Would like to have an amendment just to say that it would be going by the state. The decommissioning bond is through the State of Illinois and the Department of Agriculture.
Okay, so we'd have an amended motion?
Yep.
Do we need to go ahead and second that and?
If somebody needs to make that motion.
Okay, so, we'd like to make that motion.
I can make that motion.
And you know what to put in there, you think?
You're moving to require the decommissioning bond to go through the State of Illinois?
And the Department of Ag. Yep.
And Department of Ag.
Do we need a second on that motion?
Yep.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Clausen? And then, any discussion? Vote on that one right now, a second. Okay, so roll call that amendment then.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Now you're voting on the motion, as the amended motion.
Okay, now we're, okay, so.
Does the, excuse my ignorance here on both of these, does the county have a, what's the county's involvement on this?
County has no solar.
The county board doesn't have any?
And they have no zoning oversight in the county.
Okay, so now we're going to vote on the amended motion.
Correct.
And we can do roll call on that. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Okay, and this similar motion from the last one, hopefully we won't be amending it, but I move to adopt special ordinance number 2022-1842, granting a special use located at rural 2100 Evergreen Court for the purpose of constructing a solar farm, land of Lincoln, petitioner 07-1-00327-000, and 07-1-00330-000. petitioner 07-1-00327-000 and 07-1-00330-000. We need a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Phipps, and comments?
So this one is a little bit different. This one is adjoining the city of Mattoon. It's just north of Dodge Grove Cemetery, east of Evergreen Court, and they would access through Evergreen Court. They did have some questions at that, at the planning commission, that they were concerned about, they wanted to know how many trucks would come through the subdivision during construction, like semis. There is, they said about nine in the first six months. Shouldn't be any big trucks after that, just littler trucks, just going out there to maintain things. So the planning commission did recommend it with the condition that, again, the decommissioning letter, the, that they annex the property to the city of Mattoon if they get granted this through the state of Illinois and before construction permit, and then also any damages to the road that they would do in the subdivision that they would repair. That was a recommendation, special use to grant on those conditions. Preet is on the line. She hasn't said anything about the ordinance, but Preet, do you need the ordinance to say something different about the decommissioning? Are you okay with the way we presented it?
Hi, thank you for having me via video call. I think it should be okay, but I mean, to be safe, maybe go ahead, let's go ahead and have that also stayed that way.
Okay, so you guys don't have a problem with making that same amendment?
Okay, so now we need a motion to amend.
Sounds like there's more to it than just the previous one because we're gonna, are we gonna add?
On the special condition, it would still be the bonding is through the state of Illinois and the Department of Ag.
So what are we gonna do to address the annexation and the repairs?
Those stay in there. They're already in the order.
Okay, thank you.
So do we, are we okay on what we've got, we think?
You want to make that motion to amend?
Okay.
Okay. And then a second on the amendment?
I'll second.
Commissioner Graven, and then we need to have roll call on the amendment?
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Graven?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. And now we're going to do roll call on the amended motion.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Graven?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
I move to approve council decision request 2022-2307, approving the appointment of firefighter Colton Rose to regular employment status with successful completion of his probationary period effective November 20th, 2022.
And a second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Clausen, and any comments?
Colton just recently graduated Fire Academy and he'll be starting paramedic program in January. He is not able to be here this evening because he graduated Fire Academy on October 28th and got deployed with his National Guard unit to Columbia on October 31st.
Wow.
So he is due back next week, November 22nd, I believe. So that is why he is not with us this evening, but he will be a great asset to the department.
Very good. Any other comments, anybody has? Roll call then.
Mr. Graven?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
I motion to approve council decision request 2022-2308, awarding a bid of $35,386 from Core and Main for the purchase of fire hydrants and accessories.
And a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Cox, and any comments on that? Anybody? Hearing none, we will make roll call.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Graven?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Next is department reports, starting with the city administrator, community development, Kyle Gill.
It's been a very busy last couple of weeks, working with both different insurance, health insurance with Susan, property and casualty insurance with Brooke, been also preparing for arbitration with the fire, which is tomorrow, and far as community development and had 32 permits in the last two weeks. Hilton Garden Inn, they're really close to having their final. There was a couple little things with the elevator that got, that needs to be fixed this week. They're hoping to have those completed by Friday, and if it is, we think we're able to go out and possibly get a certificate of occupancy on Friday, which if that is the case, they would start being able to have people there next week, staying there. Also, the Hampton Inn, we've kind of heard that that has been sold to someone in Carbondale, so we suspect that they'll do some remodeling there in the next few weeks and hopefully maybe by the end of the year be open as well, so.
Have you talked to what their plans really are?
I have not. Steve has talked to somebody, so.
All right. Good deal. Any questions for Kyle? Okay, city attorney Dan Jones?
Couple things are upcoming. We do have another Quack and Bush hearing in the first week of December. I will report back to council after that. We also have the Rob Perry's Miracle Control Commission hearing is finally going to take place for the commission on November 29th. Have you talked about that or any other topic?
Any questions? Next is city clerk Susan O'Brien.
As Kyle said, we'd had several insurance meetings with employees and retirees to see their interest with Everside Clinic for primary care. Surveys went out. Some of them have come back in, otherwise continuation of insurance.
Okay.
That's the majority.
Any questions for Susan? Finance Beth Wright?
I'll start with the October financial report. So we're six months or 50% of the way through the fiscal year. General fund revenues roughly 15.7 million or 68.42% of the budget. General fund expenditures are roughly 13.1 million or 57.5% of the budget, leaving a surplus of 2.6 million. And compared to the year prior, we're ahead by 208,000 by 24. So both years have an installment of the ARPA funds, so they are pretty comparable in that regard. Cash position at the end of October, citywide, 25 and a half million, the month prior, 25.1, so a slight increase. And I wanted to point out on the council packet, debt payments in the capital projects fund for the public works building and in the Broadway East Business District for the mall borrowing. I believe both of those are paid off in 2028. Then on revenue tracking, income tax of 172,320, video gaming tax of 54,481, use tax of 53,799, sales tax of 705,362, televisions tax of 35,328. So most of the revenue is in for the month of November, except for utility tax. And compared to fiscal '22, we're ahead by 579,000 in terms of the major sources of Unrestricted cash in the general fund today, just under 11.5 million. And two weeks ago, it was just under 10.9. But we received all that shared revenue in the interim. And I have on my desk a copy, draft copy of the fiscal '22 audit report. I'm reading through that and preparing the management discussion analysis section. So that will be presented by the auditors at the next meeting.
Any questions for Beth? All right, next is Public Works Dean Barber.
Three crews have finished the work on Buxton subdivision, prepared for sanitary stores that we discussed involved, preparing for arrival of Casey State Bank. Whitney and I are starting a grant application for the piping on the Little Wabash drainage project. The grant was just announced yesterday. Grant applications are due on January the 19th. We'll have a public meeting at the next Public Works Advisory Board, which happens to be Tuesday, December 13th, and we're meeting that information together. The funding for the project, if we're successful, it'll cover $875,000 of the 1.25 million That's all I have to report.
Any questions for Dean? Okay, next is Fire Chief Jeff Illegos.
Thank you. The last two weeks, the guys have answered 81 calls for service. Inspectors have done seven inspections and follow-ups. Calls of interest on Thursday, the 10th, we had a fire in one of the grain bins at the old popcorn factory, which was a little challenging. We were out there for several hours, but the guys did a phenomenal job working with the crew, staff out there at Grace and Green, I believe is what it's called now. We also had a federal inspection out at the airport for our ARF guys on Wednesday, the 9th. This is a time drill. They just, the inspector will pick a point and dispatch the guys. They have to respond to that location and put product on the ground in a certain amount of time. Andrew out there said that they did a fabulous job with plenty of time to spare, so good job by them. Training wise, they finished up their technical rescue training at the lift building and then they started last week doing their hands-on training out at the training building. One thing that the guys in their downtime took on was the Santa House project. Bart was kind of the go-to guy for that, that has brought the Santa House back to life, and I don't want to go into too much detail and still, still everybody's thunder, but proud of all the guys that pitched in and they did, they did a really good job on it, so. And that's all I've got, unless anybody's got any questions.
Okay. All right, next is Police Chief Sam Gaines.
Well, my guys didn't build the Santa House. It's been nice for them though, slow time of year. We're at 987 calls for service the last two weeks, so a couple hundred less than what we're used to, 36 arrests. Got Caleb Payne graduating this Friday, so you'll see a new face on the street. It's been a long 14 weeks for him. We'll be happy to have him and then, oh, Iowa Solutions will be in town to test for new servant candidates this Thursday. That's all I've got.
Any questions? Chief Gaines? Okay, Arch and Tourism Angelia Burgett?
Thank you. Santa House coming, so thanks for just giving an intro. So this week is Lightworks Week. Lightworks Walkthrough takes place on Thursday, 5 to 7. In addition, as we've mentioned, they have a, it's a little nostalgia in Santa House coming back to life. So the part that I played in this, as part of this committee, has been to establish some of the marketing and so we've got all the information out there, helps it watch and people to enjoy that, and also dogs. There's two days for dogs, so if you're interested, I give her information about that. So we're going to have Santa and Mrs. Claus out there. I think it's something really special, so the hope is that people will also add that on to their Lightworks adventure. Also Thursday night, we have two other events happening in conjunction with the walk-through. Cerberus Lincoln has the kickoff to their lights and have Santa at their place as well with some treats and things inside, so that's from 3 to 5 on Thursday. And then Douglas Hart is having a, they're going cheerful character walk-through, so you can get out there and see what they've got to walk through, but really for later on in December, but as a part of this kickoff night for the holidays, they're doing it as well, so kind of a cool, it's a cool night in Mattoon for sure. But one thing I want to share, and I do have records, if anybody wants them, the, of course, I mean, people called this week to ask about Lightworks and asked some, you know, follow-up questions to the story about it taking place this week, and I started looking in Kirk Stretch's old records, which I had, there's a lot of old records, a lot of them. And we dug up some information. So when this started in 1992, there were 12 displays and 13 committee members. And 13 committee members, that's the part that blows me away, I can't imagine, but that's a great place to start. So 13 committee members, 12 displays, and this year we have 106 displays, 134 sponsors and three committee members there. That's probably the right direction. But it's, it's really cool to see in 30 years of growth where we are, and I don't think we're done growing yet, so. Also, just if you haven't seen, the lights are up in Heritage Park, and it looks pretty holiday-ish, very homey downstairs, our downtown, where there's a, all the lights are on the streets and the trees are lit, so just, it looks good down there.
Okay. Do you have to ring a special Santa in for the dogs? I didn't know if that's a.
Apparently they have been agreeing with me.
There was?
On a track of sorts, yes.
I didn't know if it's something special. You know, as a dog committee member, I would think that you would know.
I made a phone call to Santa. Santa loves all creatures, so it's, it's all good.
All creatures?
Yes. Downtown Christmas?
Yes, on December 2nd, 5 to 8, and then the Friday, December 2.
Always a fun time. Great downtown event.
Yeah, good deal. Any other questions about dogs or Santa or anything?
Yeah, Friday, December.
Okay. All right, let's see, next we've got comments by the council members, starting alphabetically by Jim Clausen.
Actually don't have anything, Mayor.
Oh, well, all right, quiet. And then next, it would be Commissioner Cox.
The Santa House, one more comment about the Santa House. Huge thank you to Bob and Judy Jones for, for making that possible with their donation and the vision and the idea they, they had to get that going again, refurbish it in honor of their son Tyler. So I did call Bob today and, and they're very excited about, about this and, and so great community involvement and very generous on their part. I do want to thank the firefighters for your work on that as well. I did see Bart the other day and told him as well, so great project. People are going to love it. It's nostalgia, but it's also just a good community event, so. The library is hosting a fundraiser tomorrow. Encourage everybody to attend if you'd like to see how great and different services that the library has to offer. That's from 5 to 7 tomorrow. If you have not seen the, the history display from Chris Surtick at the library, I encourage you to go spend as much time as you possibly can there because it is the total history of, of Mattoon and it's, it's very interesting. I think anyone that goes there would enjoy it, so. And I believe that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Graven?
I want to add one more thing. On December 3rd, the Coast County Historical Society will be having Santa at the depot. That's okay.
It's on, for sure.
Yeah, it's on, yeah. It's 6:30, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there to read "Twas the Night Before Christmas" to the kids, and there'll be cookies and stuff, so gotten about. However, Santa will not be arriving by the train because Amherst Tractor did away with that train, so we'll have him enter another way.
Well, humbug.
Yeah, I know. It was not our, yeah, we weren't real happy about that, so.
Earlier, there were two that were from the South train. I mean, I don't know when this happened, I wasn't paying attention, but.
They did away, during COVID, they did away with the one coming up from Effingham, which is where we used to have it, Effingham to Mattoon, so.
Well, they used to be late, 8 o'clock in the morning, and from Chicago.
Yeah, yeah, we could have it like. Yeah, yeah, we could have it like at the crack of dawn, but we decided to wait, yeah, anyway, so, anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, you don't by any chance have any special times for dogs, do you, at the?
They're welcome, Mike.
They're welcome?
If they're, city will allow them in the building.
I don't know, probably, probably not, I mean, okay, next would be, Mr. Phipps?
Santa will be arriving December 24th at my house in the evening, but that's not, that's just, that's not public.
Okay.
Private display there.
Good deal.
Since we have a chimney, otherwise I have nothing.
Other than that, that's it?
Yes.
Well, keep it simple then, I think the sports complex has been busy, intergovernment agreements we've been working on, fundraising is wrapping up, design work and bidding process is moving forward, commercial development continues to get parties interested, so it's still moving ahead, and that's really all I have, anybody has any questions on that? And then, I think next item would be, anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, if I could, one other thing, we talked a lot about Santa already and so forth, but next week being Thanksgiving, I think we all have a lot to be thankful for, we have a great community, I appreciate everyone being here and thankful for all the work that our employees do, it's a great community, so we do have a lot to be thankful for, and with that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Nice touch there, by the way.
Thanksgiving always gets lost, you know.
Right, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Cox, and we'll do roll call.
May I just have a second?
Oh, second, we didn't do that. Who would like to second that? Anybody? Kind of want to stay. You don't want to? I kind of want to stay.
Second.
Second? Did you have to poke him to do that? Nobody wants to leave.
You have to work early in the morning, so I know, I know you're probably ready to go.
I'm on the road at 5:30, but who cares?
Mr. Clausen did that, now we have a roll call.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Graven?
No.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I noticed you didn't say no.
Was that Santa Clausen or was that Miss Claus?
Oh, good one, Mayor.
Good one.
No, that guy on, yeah, he was.